The meeting for the mayor in Alderman Town, Clinton, Louisiana, Wednesday, September 9th, 2015 will now be called to order. Let us all stand. We'll have a Friday morning conference. We'll be ready then, followed by the pleasure of the ladies and seniors.
Let us bow our heads, please. Father God, we come before you tonight, Father God. As we conduct this meeting, Father God. Father God, we lift you up, Father God. Let you take over this meeting, Father God. Put us on one accord, Father God. Father God, we deny division, Father God, and we embrace unity, Father God. As this town moves forward, Father God. We welcome, Father God, any advice, Father God. We ask, Father God, that the maintenance department, Father God, the police department, the aldermen, and the mayor, Father God, and most of all, Father God, the citizens, Father God. Put us all on one accord, Father God, as we go forward, Father God. We give you the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll do a roll call. Aldermen, Lisa Washington, George Kilburn, Kim Young, Johnny Beecham, Clovis Matthews, Chief of Police Freddie Dunn, Fire Chief Douglas Beecham, Maintenance Superintendent Darren Harrell, Town Attorney Charles Griffin, Town Clerk Angelika Schlossschire, Town Accountant Tim Butler. At this time, changes or additions to the agenda. I would entertain a motion to add Mr. McCraney with USDA to the agenda at this time.
How many motions that we add Mr. McCraney to the agenda?
It has been motioned by Alderman Lisa Washington and second by Alderman Clovis Matthews that we add Mr. McCraney with USDA to the agenda. Are you ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye. In the opposition, ayes have it, the motion is carried. Item D on the agenda, approval of the minutes happy to read the August 12th meeting. Minutes, I will entertain a motion. It has been motioned by Alderman Clovis Matthews and second by Alderman George Kilburn. A motion to approve the meetings, the minutes of our August 12th meeting. Are you ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye. Any opposition? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Item E, approval to pay the bills. I will entertain a motion at this time to pay the bills. It has been motioned by Alderman Kim Young and second by Alderman George Kilburn that we pay the bills. Are you ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye. Is there any opposition? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. At this time, before we amend the budget, I will ask Mr. McCraney to come at this time.
Oh, I didn't know how many people we had.
I mean, it's okay if you leave some forms. Do you need some copies, ma'am?
Oh, well, I'll just pass this out. I do have a team copy. First of all, thank Mayor Bill for having me and to everyone here. I'm just here to tell you about our program. I work with USDA Rural Development. We are located in AMU, Louisiana. We cover 21 parishes in the southeast area. If you look at the back of that form, you will see a map. On that map, you'll see that our ABC is broken down into four areas. Monroe is Area 1, Mackin is Area 2, last year is Area 3, and again, AMU is Area 4. And you will see the parishes under those things. I'm about to give you just a brief history, a bit of some brief information on our program. But one thing I would like for you to take from this meeting is my name is Mac McCraney. I'm the area director with Rural Development. My phone number is on that back page, and I will leave some calls. But just to tell you a little bit about Rural Development. What can Rural Development do? Who is Rural Development? Well, Rural Development is a lending agency with the United States Department of Agriculture. We are one of the few agencies that don't really touch farming, but we do do a lot. Basically, what we say is that we can build a town from the ground. And what do you mean? Because we have three areas in our office that we work with. We have housing loans, we have business loans, and we have community programs. Just for you, community programs is where we work with municipalities and nonprofit organizations and recognize Indian tribes. Now, what can we do with community programs? We can do city halls, we can do schools, we can do hospitals, we can police cars, fire trucks, fire equipment, police equipment, school equipment, anything you need. The only thing that we cannot do with that program is recreation and gaming. We can't touch gaming and recreation. I mean, when we meet in recreation, sometimes, you know, golf courses is included in that. But other than that, we can... Now, can we touch some recreation? I would say yes, but it has to be maybe wellness. It can't be recreations anyway. It can be a wellness center that you could probably have recreational activities in if that's going to be how you word that. But we can do all of those things. I think, if I'm not mistaken, we may have talked about a utility vehicle. All of those things we can work with. Now, we go from that program to our water and waste, where we work with sewer systems and water towels. Population has to be under 10,000. But if you're under 10,000 population, we can come in if there's water towels or water wells that you may be working on, repairing, painting, and all those things. We make loans for that. The thing about us, the thing about our program, we'll go 40 years, where most people will only go 20 or 30. But we'll go up to 40 years on our loans, not on police cars. They don't believe their police cars are going to last 40 years, but we will go, you know, the life expectancy of that vehicle. So, those are things that we can do with municipalities. As far as home loans, you may have some constituents in your area. We just believe that it is American dream to own homes. We work with low and very low income. And what we can do is we can come in and we can either purchase a home for them or they can build it. And even we can subsidize in some cases. So what I'm saying is that if your note is $600, the government may pay, you may pay 300, and the government may pay the rest. We'll pay 1% of the loan, and you will pay the other percent, whatever that percentage is. Right now, I think our average interest rate is like 3.25 or 3.75. And then you will pay, the government will pay that 2%, up to the 2.75%, you will pay 1%. But if you can, then you can pay it off. It just depends. It's based on your situation, your financial situation. We also have home repair loans, where we can loan up to $20,000. Now, if we loan you $20,000, your payment to us will be $93 a month. We can't add on to your house, but you can repair. And we work with very low income in that category. If you're 62 years or older, you qualify for a grant. That grant can be up to $7,500. So you can qualify for $27,500. And your payment will be $93 a month. If you go over $7,500, then of course we have to take a mortgage. That's our cap. So if you borrow $7,499, we won't touch your property. We won't ask for a mortgage. We just ask that you pay it back. Now, let's say you're 62 years old, and you qualify for a grant, and at $7,499, you can have $14,000, I mean $15,000, well, $14,999, something like that. And you will receive, and your payment will be roughly $35 a month. What can we do? We can't, with the grant, is have to remove health and safety hazards. In other words, we can come in, we can make a handicap accessible. If the roof is a problem, and it can be colors and things, we can do it. We just can't paint your walls to beautify the house or bring in cabinets just because you saw these new ones at Lowe's and you said it would look better in your house. But if those cabinets are falling down, and we can find a hazard and we can replace that. So there are things we can do. But not in the beauty of that program. Someone needs a roof. Well, you turn around, a roof may cost you $5,000 to $7,000. Everybody just don't have it in their pocket. But you borrow $5,000 from us, and your payment will be roughly $23 a month. You know, and then even coming in with something as simple as taking window units out, if that house can take central air and heat. You know, we can save you probably that $23 a month in your executive year. Bringing in a high-efficiency energy, air conditioning, heating system, that can save you money where you actually making money off a loan. Sound crazy. I don't know where else you can go and make money off a loan. But that's how that program works. And again, for those with a moderate income level, we have what we call a guaranteed loan. So basically, you can make about $75,000 a year as a family of a household of four. Qualify for our guaranteed housing loan. Now, when you qualify for our guaranteed housing loan, the beauty of that is, we'll loan, you'll be loaned 100%. You don't have to worry about coming up with 20% down payment and things like that. And there's a possibility you can walk in and take that out of your pocket because it depend on a price value and things like that. You may be able to walk in, turn the key, and come out and just own the house. We don't require down payments and things like that. So we have some programs out there that can benefit everyone. We have business loans now. Business loans is simply located in our state office. But they, and it's mainly a guaranteed loan. In other words, you can go to a bank, obtain a loan, and the government is saying, when I say guaranteed, just to clarify that, the government is co-signing. So the government is telling that bank, we'll co-sign that loan, which will make banks a little bit more willing to work with a little bit more riskier plan. Now, we are a lending institution. And I know with our community facilities and everything, you know, a lot of people want grants. We don't have a lot of grant money. We don't have, that's out of our control. We are funded by Congress, and I think last year they may have given us $300,000 for the state. So what we try to do is take that $300 and divide it up. But where the grant will work at, let's say you need a police car. Well, we may give you $30,000, and you may pay $30,000, and you can come out with two police cars. So that's how that grant can work. But now, if you're going to go build a new community center, $30,000 is not going to do much for you. But on some things like that, equipment or anything like that, utility vehicles, anything like that, that grant may, because couldn't eligible for some grant money. Again, it's not 100%, but they are eligible for some grant money. So those are the things that we do with Rural Development. Some people look at, and I always call us the lender of first opportunity. It's not just a first homeowner, because if your house, if you live in a place that's falling down and it's not safe, we can loan you for a new house. But if you have a house that's safe and sanitary, well, we can't, we're not even making rental property for you and things like that. So we can't come in and give you a loan there. But if you don't, then we definitely can help you. So that's what we do with Rural Development. We want the word spread out. We've done a few things in Clinton. I know the hospital over here, a medical center. We financed that. And we do this apartment complex right down the street, past the high school. We financed that. So we do do some multifamily financing, again, because everybody may not want to own a home. So we try to make sure that rent is affordable and it's reasonable. Some places, we do rental assistance, some places we don't. I don't have a list in front of me of all our places that's rental assistance, because again, we cover 21 parishes and that's everything on the southeast portion of Louisiana. So that's what we have to offer. Again, if you have any groups that want to meet with me or meet with my staff to talk about housing, we'll do that. If our chief or a police chief or the mayor want to talk about some things, or even the maintenance, want to talk about things that we can help with on community facilities, please, please give us a call. Our job is, we're here to serve. We're here to serve. It's my responsibility to make sure that you treat it fair. And I try to tell my staff, I want to give you every opportunity to make that loan work. Now, if it don't work, of course, we're not going to put you in a situation to fail. Even on some housing loans, if it's not affordable, it's not affordable. For example, we'll send out some paperwork. If that paperwork say you qualify for a $70,000 house, then you have to try to find a house within that range. I can't give you $125,000, nor you can't pay that. That's not fair to you, and it's not fair to the taxpayers because we have to be good stewards of their money. But I will assure you that we will give you every chance and every opportunity to be successful. So that's what we have here. Thank you again for allowing us to talk. I'll take questions if there are any.
How do you spell your last name?
McCraney, M-C-C-R-A-N-E-Y. And that's Mac. I do have some calls. I do believe I have enough calls to go around. Please, if you don't have any questions, but if you have relatives that made a fit in our program, I know some people have Junior in the house and they want to get him out. He is an opportunity for... Yeah, to get him out. If Junior's working and making a little income, we can, I'm sorry, we can put Junior in his own place. Now, I will say this, and it's not to be negative. One of the biggest problems that we have, especially with our repair loan, at this time, I didn't hear from back there, with our repair loan, is that some elderly people who can really benefit from our program, they don't really want to get a mortgage. They afraid that the government's been in business and things like that. They want to leave it to Junior. Well, let me ask you a question. If that house is falling down, what do you need? What do you need? So, but my thing is, we can make your life a little bit more comfortable. You know, I, this is, like, I use this testimony. I went to a house where I was afraid that if this lady sit down, she can go straight through the ground in her bathroom. That's how bad the floor was. But she worried about leaving it to Junior. And I'm saying, even if he borrow $20,000, if he can't, or she can't pay $93 a month, they can't stay nowhere else. Nowhere else. So please, don't let the government saying we're going to take a mortgage offend you. If you feel that the application is too complicated, that's no problem. I have staff that will assist you. Now, we're not going to tell you what to put, but we'll ask you appropriate questions and assist you in filling that application out. So that's what, again, that's what we do. You can have my call. If you don't remember anything I said, just remember that number. Give me a call, and I can tell it all to you again. Any questions? Man, that's a first.
I do appreciate Mr. McCraney for coming out. And my reason for bringing him, we went to a conference in...
Where'd he go?
Lafayette. Lafayette, and we sat in on the presentation with the USDA. And I just felt like it was a welcome confirmation. And it's not going to fit everybody, but it can fit somebody that live here. And so, but my thing is that you all got to hear, if you know of someone that can actually use these services, please let them know. I mean, it can't do anything but enhance, you know, the town of Clinton here, with what they do with their program here. I mean, thanks for coming out. I do appreciate you.
Okay, okay. Again, you have my number. I hate to say that. I'm not just going to stay around. I'm driving back to Hammond's.
I'm sorry.
So thank you again for allowing me to come. Again, if you have any church groups, or any... If you, all of us want to get together with some people in your area and bring a meeting together, please, please give us a call. We have government-owned vehicles, so we'll come to you. And you'll see, we'll come after hours. That's not a problem. Again, our job is here to serve. Police chief, fire chief, anything you need, I'll be contacting you. I'm going to pay there. It's the same with you. Please, please give us a call. At least give us a chance to, I mean, look at what we have to offer. We definitely not in competition with local lending institutions. But if you don't fit their bill, then maybe something you can do.
Thank you so much.
All right. Well, I'll be addressing it always.
The next item on the agenda. Mr. Butler, as far as amending the budget and your accounts report, you want to just combine? Can I just come back to you when I get you? Okay, let's go with the next item on the agenda. Silman Institute Homecoming Parade, and also I have a letter from the East Wilshire High School. And we'll do both of those at the same time. As far as the route, the Silman Homecoming Parade is going to be on October 16th at 10:38 PM, and we'll do one at a time. Chief, do you have a copy of that route?
I had this placed on the agenda. We need to change Silman Route. They want to loop around the courthouse, and they always tell us they have no more than 15 floors. And it always end up to like 30 floors. And they hold traffic up because they run into each other. So I've had my clerk type of letter and send it to them pending board approval. They going to go around the courthouse, and they can go... They want to come around the courthouse, turn on St. Helena, loop around, come back to St. Helena, and go to Church Street. They want to go completely around the courthouse twice. That's not going to happen. Last time they did, they ran into each other. The parade was so big, when they got on St. Helena, when they got on Bank Street and St. Helena, the first part of the parade was right back to hell.
They want to go around it. The problem is trying to go around it, think twice.
Yep.
So the whole parade is trying to go at the same time. They go all the way around it, but trying to loop back on itself.
Well, my plan is, when they come around it, when they come around the first time, because they want to dance. When they come around, they going to have two spots where they going to dance. Say, you're not coming back in front of the bank again because you going to run over each other. When they come around, they get back on Bank Street, they going to have to take a right on St. Helena, go to Spring Street, go to Jackson, and come around and go back to the school. Or they going to hit each other.
Okay, this time, you can finish.
Yeah, the high school, you can put this on the next meeting because the next meeting is only 13, and this is only the night. Yeah, so Silman actually could have been on the 13th meeting. But these police hours is fine. They pretty much call us and ask us what route they can do, what they do. They leave the middle school, come up, police hours, ride to Bank Street, go around the backside of the courthouse, come back up to... They go to Woodbill Street, come back up to Liberty Street, take a left on St. Helena, go to church. So you don't have a problem with them because they going around the backside. Silma want to go in the front, around the backside, and in the front of the unit. If they got 10 floors, that's going to be a problem. But they always think they have 10, and they end over 30.
Okay, so, the request for Silman Institute. I will entertain a motion that they will be permitted to have their homecoming parade with the changes that you have your clerk typing up, that they take that route that you're...
That's what I was saying at the time.
Okay, she's going to say that. I'll entertain a motion for that one, let's just do that one.
Go ahead. I'm making a motion to let you know. Make a change. Look at that, Chief, I have a suggestion.
It's been motioned by Alderman George Kilburn and second by Alderman Kim Young that the Silman Parade will proceed with the changes. Of course, they will decorate route that Chief has submitted to the town clerk, that the town clerk will send over to Silman Institute. Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor by saying aye. Any opposition? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. The request for the East Wilshire High School, that... I'm sorry. Let me, okay. You're fine? Let me, okay, let me go back. Let me get a motion to add the East Wilshire Homecoming Parade route to the agenda at this time. How many motions that we add to the East Wilshire High School homecoming route to the agenda? It has been motioned by Alderman Lisa Washington and second by Alderman Kim Young that we add the request of the East Wilshire High School for their parade on October 9th to the agenda. Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor by saying aye. Is there any opposition? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Now, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the request of the East Wilshire High School to have their parade with the route that they have submitted because it has been so approved by the chief.
I'm making a motion to approve.
It has been motioned by Alderman Johnny Beecham and second by Alderman Clovis Matthews that the East Wilshire High School Homecoming Parade will go according to the route that they presented here. Are you ready to vote?
I agree.
All in favor by saying aye. Is there any opposition? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Okay. Item H, blighted and abandoned properties. As you know, that a couple meetings ago, there was some... There were some, attend some citizens here, and they were concerned about the blighted properties. We've been working with that situation, that issue here in the town. Alderman Kim is the chairperson that's over the blight committee. And what we've done most recently, and it's the second attempt, we've sent certified letters to some of the homeowners as Mr. Harrell and Michael Sipulas, we write out, we get addresses, or we get calls, and we go out and we identify these properties and these property owners. And so we sent certified letters. Letters simply stating, asking these homeowners to, in seven days, call here and tell us exactly what are your plans to, you know, to clean this property up. Some have called, some haven't. And some that have called and said that they were going to do certain things with their property, have not heard from them as far as what they say that they want to do, that they want to clean it up. So with that in mind, according to the town ordinance, these properties, the town, we can clean these up, place the lanes, or whatever we need to do from a legal standpoint. And I had Miss Andrew to call Mr. Griffin to see where we go from here, because we've notified some of these people and to know about, nothing's been done.
Basically, what you have to do is, you have the notice by the registered certified mail, giving them a date and time to come to a regular special meeting after you've had Mr. Gerald Gordon do an inspection, like in words that he says, the house has to be demolished, or if it's a danger or whatever, or some of the R's be moved, and these, those, these, we'll report for each place. And you give them notice appear and give them, at the hearing, a time on which... And you give them notice appear, and, and give them, at the hearing, a time on which that has to be corrected. And then if they don't respond by that time, then after that, you can set a time, and go out there and say it's a box you built. And then you have to reset them, those, give them notice, the date and time, and they gonna be out there. And go out there and do that. After that, you can assess your costs and prepare an affidavit that we decide to normalize upon you. And record that as a lien against the property. And also, the, uh, personal life loss, uh, to affect that, or you can want to, uh, to sue individually against that, to affect that, or you can district court. Or you can assess it onto taxes for next year, and how to go out with their taxes as part of the tax assessment, which you have to pay your taxes and pay them. And if not, then to go through a long procedure of the legal taxes. So that would be the proceedings that you follow. So your next step, since you've already given a mission notice and hope that they're gonna respond, is to go ahead and get an inspection from him, as against the building director, to say what the problem is, and then set up a notice to them to come if you want to do a regular special meeting, to basically show cause why it should not be either demolished or whatever, if it has to be done. And once they can layer, take the action that they respond, like the day you get about that hearing to get it done.
Okay, as far as the letter to, for them to come and appear before the board, I will do that. Is there, on what you, what, what you're saying, is there, yeah, right, right. I understand that. As far as time, because these people have been notified, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm saying, I know that there are guidelines we have to follow. But these people have been notified.
Had one year, you know, before the whole body, is what the statute does, uh, which basically mirrors your own ordinances, uh, kind of thirty three, it's also efficient, kind of, uh, too. But basically, you would have them come at one of these hearings, you know, regular special meeting, to address that. And at that, you'd give them like, you know, six days or ten days to have it done. And when that deadline goes by, and they had it done, then you can go in there and do it. But before you actually go there, new demolition, you have to get some of those who are coming in Monday, October, or whatever, to do it. And that way, they, they'll be aware of that also.
Okay. Because we, we've been going back and forth with this, and, and I think that the, uh, I think that the action that people are taking, because we've done it before, uh, we've been, uh, I even talked to some people when I was on the board. And so, and I think people have it in their mind that they're just gonna talk to us, and nothing's gonna be done. No action, but that's not, that's why I'm asking, as far as the timeframe, you know.
What do you think the best way to get the money is, put it on tax, or do it the other way? What's the, in your opinion?
Well, it depends, uh, it depends, if it's somebody you know that's, uh, working, or you can garish it, somebody'd say, go ahead and do it individually, and sue them or whatever. If it's something where you think you might have to get in over the property, I think I would just, uh, do it on the tax laws, and, and, 'cause if they don't pay the taxes. Or if there're people that happen to pay the taxes, but they don't do this, that may be easy too. It just depends, it, you know, if you know the people, and know the situation, kind of, to prepare for one another, which route you may wanna go on that.
What other chances of the town have those properties adjudicated in Silman?
Well, possibly, that may be done with alternatives, like you do on taxes. Uh, there is a provision where you can either repair them, and then terminate the rent or something, but I wouldn't advise that, because you incur a lot of liability. Uh, you know, by keeping the properties, in particular, you have to rent, worry about, from the liability standpoint, I mean, you're basically not in that business, I mean, you basically just wanna recover, you run, you're entitled to the amount that you experience, plus regional attorney fees, uh, cost and interest on, on the statute. And like I said, if they're absolutely pleased and you can't get in touch with them, then you have to appoint an attorney, as a tier average, will be some attorney with run notices, like even in the legal papers and so forth, for them to make due process requirements. And then that would be the person who would also be served the notice, the date and time, if they hadn't responded, and then you go out there and do demolition or something.
Well, uh, if we have some people have property, and I know some property here, no house, you know, on the land, and I don't know if they can be in touch, 'cause you can get in touch with them or not.
Well, somebody's paying the taxes, and the first thing is to check, like, what the taxes, or if somebody getting the taxes, that was a problem. But they would apply, what I'm talking about, the law, and it's one of those buildings, like if there's a jail player, or weeds, you know, like a bad bridge, and people don't know where the yard, and the parish goes to that procedure, and the city has to move it, put a lien on the property from up.
Yeah, the city of Redland has a great program, I'm sorry, they have a great program, is that, uh, how they, they clean up their, uh, community.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, I'm not, I'm not, but that may ask you, I can see what they have, or where they go in and cut yards, whatever they do.
That's the process, and if you have a bad, you'll find weeds on the properties, because there's a lot of times, because just, uh, the Silman, the bad, they build, and become, uh, places where the, they come with drugs, people, I have seven, they go in there, and all, should they put a lien on the property?
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Butler.
All right. We have, uh, financials on the table over here through the end of August. Um, through the end of August, the city's running at about a seven percent deficit. Um, after July, we were, we were just at right at break even. Biggest culprit was the down payment you had to make on insurance. It was, I think, about thirty-seven and fourteen, so a little over fifty thousand dollars we had to pay. I think the, the down payment was, the thirty-four, yeah. And then there'd be five payments of fourteen thousand, so that, that's kind of the biggest culprit. The others are just across the board expensive. I know there was a lot of, there's been a lot of repairs made, it's, you know, utility fund, you know, that's been hit. So it's really kind of across the board. So, associated with that, it's actually thrown our budget off. So, we're gonna have to make amendment to the budget. The income is right about where we thought it was gonna be. For the general fund, we're two, we're actually two percent, doing two percent better on income. So that target hit just about right. On the expenses, we're about sixteen percent over. And that's where we're gonna have to make an amendment to the budget. Uh, and again, it's just, it's kind of operational expenses across the board. It's not really any one thing that's, that's really way off, it's just, you know, like I say, gas, for instance. Gas purchases, eighteen thousand dollars more today through August than we've been able to budget for. So things like that is really where, where it's at. And what I was gonna do is make a, go back to an amendment, line item amendment, to bring it back, you know, with, with the audit, we got caught being outside of ten percent of our expenses on a couple of the items. So we wanna bring that, bring it back into, you know, true number. And I'm gonna do it through the first three quarters of the year. So, we'll have it amended, the budget amended, through the end of September. And I'll bring those line items to next meeting, where we can, uh, you know, I'll show you the items that were changed on the budget, to bring it back into line. That's pretty much what I got. Anybody got any questions?
So, we can entertain a motion to, we'll make a motion.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion this time, so then Mr. Butler can go ahead and amend the budget. It has been motion by Alderman Douglas Matthews, and second by Alderman Kim Young, that Mr. Butler will go ahead and amend the budget. Uh, direct vote. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you as well. Okay. Put your hands up this time. Oh, it's just, okay, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, this is, okay. Okay, we'll entertain the course from our department heads, uh, we're here from, uh, Chief, uh, Police Department.
Town of Clinton, the Police Department, we had seventy citations, all made, was eleven. Arrest was two, but actually, it was more than two. Summers was eleven, burglary, theft was three, excuse me, oh, three persons was arrested. Since this report, outstanding warrants was eleven fifty-two. We're up by three from last month, and case foul, district attorney was three. And, uh, I got electronic equipment coming in to install with those cameras, the radars and the infrared, to tie into the camera, so we got cameras throughout the city limits, where we could tap into them. I have the code where we can get in, in the unit, or we could sit here with the laptop. So it's gonna give us access to throughout the city limits, not just in one area, throughout. Where we could look at the computer and bag it up and see exactly what's going on. And that was bought off a grant. A grant was written, and we got it off. So it didn't cost us down the dime.
That's it. Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Chief.
May bow and, uh, we got our pile rating back. I got a letter, uh, yesterday. Uh, as you probably remember, the rating is in two different parts. Uh, we have a rating, two separate ratings. One is for the Town of Clinton inside of the city limits, and one is for the Clinton Fire Protection Territory, which is around Clinton, but within that district. So it's two different ratings. Um, we went down from a six to a five, which is a good thing. The lower the number, the better. And, uh, so we've been at a six ever, forever. Uh, we've never been lower than that, so we did really well, uh, bringing it down to a five. That's going to, um, show in insurance premiums. Everyone's premiums, uh, should be going down. So I think it's effective, I have to look at the thing, it's effective, uh, I believe in a week or two, it is pretty, pretty soon. Uh, so you can contact your insurance companies, and, uh, and get an adjuster on your, on your half-property house insurance, fire insurance. Uh, so that's good news. The property or the, the area outside of the Town of Clinton, we did not get a five. We stayed at a six. Uh, although we went up in the percentage from about a forty-one to a, we needed to get up to a fifty to get a class five. Um, and we were about a forty-seven, forty-eight, so we missed about two points, two percentage points. Uh, we had raised it up from, we were like a forty-one the last time. So we went up, but not quite enough. Uh, I'm gonna be looking over the, the results. As I said, I just got yesterday, I'm gonna be looking over the results to see if there, anything we can contest, and maybe pick up those other two points, but, uh, I, I'm not sure we'll be able to pick up those two, but at least bid drop, and we did show improvement from, uh, five years ago. So that's good news. Good news for, for everybody. As I mentioned at the last meeting, uh, we opened the, uh, bids for the air compressor, and we had three bids that we advertised for in the paper. And, uh, we, uh, it's been awarded to Ferrera Fire Apparatus, they had the lowest bid, uh, of the, of the three. They had the lowest bid. And, uh, it's about thirty-seven thousand something for that, for the air compressor. Uh, it should be, from then, it should be about another two or three weeks before it, it comes in to be installed. So, uh, waiting for that one. Uh, we also put out, uh, notices for bids for extrication tools. We're, we're gonna be upgrading our, uh, extrication tools, as a thing, tools you use to cut people out of cars, with spreaders, cutters, and rams, and things like that. And, uh, we're going to battery-operated tools. Uh, they've made some great improvements, uh, with battery-operated twenty-four volt, uh, battery-operated. We used them, they brought them up a couple of months ago, and we cut up three cars, and, uh, they never ran out of juice in, in, in like two or three hours. Uh, so, we were very impressed. We didn't see any difference, uh, between those and the ones we have with air compressor. We're not gonna get rid of the one that we have with the, uh, with the motor, the gasoline motor. Uh, it's gonna be a backup, actually gonna put here on another unit. So we'll have two sets, one's gonna be the battery, and one's gonna be the other. But, uh, we couldn't tell any difference between, in the power, and the cutting, and spreading, and all that. So Jackson has one tool that they've, uh, they've had good results with, uh, and Baton Rouge has gone to the battery-operated tool. They're not that much lighter, but they're easier to handle, because you only have one tool. You don't have hoses, you don't have to bring the, the compressor with you. So it can operate in a lot of different situations. So we put bids out on that. Um, it's gonna cost around a little over thirty thousand, we believe, for the tools. And, uh, so we're, that, that, those bids will be open Friday, this Friday, the eleventh, um, at four o'clock at the fire department. We also got quotes, we didn't have to advertise a bid, but we've got quotes for the roof or the ceiling of the fire department, all the, since we moved in, we put in the extra doors, a lot more wind, and a lot more humidity has caused all the insulation to start flaking off. It's that stuff that they put in, it's kind of a roll-type, thin, white insulation, it started flaking off everywhere. So we, we're gonna get a spray-on foam, uh, insulation, and, uh, we put out bids, well, quotes, got quotes for it. And it's gonna cost about, uh, fourteen thousand for that, to, and that's for the entire ceiling, for the, and this is a big ceiling too. Uh, that's gonna be done between September twenty-first, well, beginning September twenty-first, probably that whole week. Uh, we have to move stuff to one side, they'll spray, then we move stuff to the other side, and they'll spray. And it'll be done, when they, when they leave, it'll be ready to be, uh, used. The next big project we have on the horizon, we haven't advertised for bids yet, but is, uh, we need to replace our service truck. The one we're using, we have to take by pile standards, you know, that, we have to take to every structure fire, two pumpers or two engines, and a service truck. The service truck had, carried ladders, extra lights, poles, all this stuff that you have to have. The, the apparatus we're using for our service truck, the cab is relatively new, is a two thousand, that's new for us. Um, but it doesn't have very many miles on it, so it's still a pretty good cab. The back of it, uh, is actually an old telephone truck that we used on a truck before this cab. So it was made back in the sixty, even the fifties or the sixties, the telephone, original telephone. The, we had it, have a tank on it, but it leaks badly. So the whole thing needs to be replaced. So I'm glad the guy from USDA came, and I'm, I'm gonna be talking to him. Uh, we can put up some money for it, and if you can finance the rest of it, or, or grant, uh, the rest of it, that'd be great. So I'll be talking to him about that. So that's the next big, um, and, uh, that's about it. Unless there are any questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Harold, thank you so much.
Oh, in the past month, it's been, uh, good for us. We've only had two water leaks, like three gas leaks, oh. We started back, installing the radio, we, we talked over, oh. Right now, we're doing, like, they, we're putting in four today, oh. We're trying to at least do, at least five, start doing five today, uh, get, get out of, get that out of the way and pop out. We had some problems with our wells, um, our teller street, but our pass, uh, pound, pound gets well, oh. With the, with chlorine, the piping for chlorine, uh, boosters, uh. But it's just, due to the fact that chlorine is so strong, it just eats it up on the sign. We just have to go in, you know, and repair it, and replace it, oh. And other than that, we just did the, the basic, uh, maintenance, cut grass, asphalt, and trying to keep the lid up.
I come along with the sewage. There's a lot of things, I, you'll find a lot of springs in there.
Especially, well, especially over there, uh, on Martha Street. They, uh, I, I didn't go, it, it was a spring over there. I do have one over by the hospital, and by the portal, I don't know if they have it, but they go. about a quarter, I didn't want to add it, but it was, it was a little.
Yeah, metal spring.
I knew.
They pumping all that water out the pole on that ditch and it's pretty running out there.
That's what they pumping out, just, uh, do for the, they just spring it.
How about, I told you, I got a lot of water coming out. He said he got about a real deep hole, yeah.
Yeah.
They, they're talking about doing that and they ain't going in with some, uh, kind
of like, uh, it's almost like a sheet powder they're going to put down. But they, I think they, they're talking about doing it in the Washington Street well and also the porn also, um, and they put the porn, like they put the, uh, the lift station in a, in a level like that, they're going to do a sheet powder for the can, it's, and also, they're going to search the same per, the phone though.
That's it. I'll give, uh, Mr. Harold, is there anything from the council? I have a few things, which are good things. First of all, Nikki and Gary, they could not be here, so they sent an update as to our sewer project and the street improvement project. Uh, as far, as far as the sewer project, all four areas are installed and in operation at the oxidation farm and they're in process of installing the wet wells for the lift stations. Uh, with the street improvement, the grant that we got to do the streets, uh, the environmental review has been submitted to the state for approval and right now what they're doing is finalizing the plans and specs that has to be submitted to the state for approval as well. We received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the, from LGAW and we'll be expending those funds. They were actually, uh, when we first applied for this money, we didn't have money for the streets and it was money to be used for the streets, so we're in, in the process of, um, getting a letter to the state asking can we use those funds in that area. With the capital, the money sent me, the grant, uh, letter that they put in to get funding for all the streets, we're still waiting to hear an answer from them, which will be late fall this year. And in the process, there's a training that, uh, will be taking place down there in Baton Rouge, I think it's next, I'm not sure, and do you remember the date for that training in, the Capitally Training? I don't know the exact date, but I will be attending and if there's a, another two, uh, couple of jobs, if there's someone I can go with me. Nikki's going to be there with me as well, we'll use that time to actually, um, network, um, talk, um, to right people around us, whatever, you can see where we are, that's the thing's done. Uh, and, uh, last but not least, uh, our website, the town, uh, we have finally got together and got your website and Mr. Harold Davis, you see in the back, uh, with our video, we video it now. Uh, meetings will be live this year. Am I correct, Mr. Davis?
Hmm.
Okay, the website as it is, I'm totally excited because it is awesome, it's interactive, uh, we have Facebook account, Twitter account, YouTube account, did I miss anything? I can put my site.
And YouTube channel.
And YouTube channel, we have all that, so that way we'll be able to get, uh, the meetings out to the public, those who cannot attend the meetings, you can go there and see, you can see one website and you're able to touch everybody that works here in the town, any concerns, but it's going to be great. Do we have a date that we're going to actually just open up and it'll be there for tour use, or we projected that yet? I know we just did the training today with the latest.
Um, uh, no, later, in about fourteen days.
Fourteen days, time.
They, they can access the, uh, the, the website now.
Okay.
And, and we're tweaking and adding more content to it, but Nikki can access it now. Uh, they can access, uh, Facebook, Twitter, uh, um, the YouTube, the whole, our deal is for, to, uh, that, I mean, for, like you said, for folks to be able to, that, that won't make the, uh, the meetings, will be able to find out what, what happened, what's going on and upcoming events that's going on in the town also. Yes, ma'am.
So the website and, and all the other things that go on, along with this, it's only a welcome information, so, you know, people can get out and let you take a tip and so on. All they have to, all they have to do is just go to the Town of Clinton? It's, uh.
Uh, townofclintla.com.
Townofclintla.com. Mr. Davis, I do appreciate you, you work so well, so diligently, so hard and I do appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
So with that, uh, I don't have anything else. At this time I will entertain the motion to adjourn the meeting. It has been motioned by Alderman Paulus Matthews and second by Alderman Kim Young that we are adjourned the meeting. Are you ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor by saying aye. Is there any opposition? Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you all for joining the meeting, it's now over.